Okay, we'll call it to our this June the 26th, 2019 meeting of the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox of the North Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come this morning just with grateful hearts. Father, we thank you for another day that you provided for each one of us, and Father, we thank you for the privilege to be here this morning, whether it be those in attendance or those that serve as our county commissioners. And Father, this morning, I just pray protection over each one of our commissioners, that you would just guide and direct them, and Father, I know as they go through the daily scheme of life, that sometimes there are struggles that come up and come in our ways, and so, Father, I just ask for your hand, protection upon them, that you would guide and direct them, and Father, this morning, as the decisions that they make, Father, just help them to be mindful of what you would have for each one of them, Father, the decisions they make that guide and direct our county, that, Father, make a big difference in who we are as a people, and so, Father, we thank you for each one of them, we ask for your guidance and direction, our protection in their lives, and Father, for this day that you provided for us, we just give you praise. Again, we just thank you for all this, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Okay, takes us to correspondence organizational business, is there anything there Derrick? Okay, takes us to public comment, we have someone signed up. Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion's limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of all county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road, Ottawa, Kansas. I really don't know what's happening, but I put something together, and I think it's okay, so we'll just let it go. And it starts out saying, "What's happening?" It's a matter of principle. Gandhi, Benjamin Franklin, and many greats lived by principle. Ken Burns also, I watch a lot of Ken Burns creations. I know you don't like me bringing up history, but you want it to be history, but history lives on. It's a matter of principle. The main principle is you never go wrong doing the right thing. The second principle is two wrongs don't make a right. Educational TV puts light on the government's went awry. I see what it says. It starts out when the government thinks it's bigger than the people.
I assume this will be covered later, but I just wanted to, that's all I had for today. The agenda says there's $27,396 in repair to the radio tower. I wondered if that was just for one tower or more than one tower? And I think it said that damages are caused by lightning. I just wanted to know if the towers were insured, and is that the deductible or the total repair cost? And that's all I got.
Allen will come up and talk about that, that's a good question. We did submit that to our insurance company, and we do believe that they are going to cover that. I believe our deductible on that type of claim would be 500, so that will hopefully be the extent of the cost, but we haven't gotten a determination from K-Camp back yet, but Allen will come up and talk about that, so.
Anyone else yet? Okay, takes us to consent agenda, items on the consent agenda that need considering and approved today, there's no claim voucher or tax change orders to look at, so the only thing we have on the consent agenda is to approve the commission meeting minutes for June the 19th, 2019. We'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, we just have one item of business today, and that takes us to that item, which will be to look at the Franklin County Emergency Communications System Tower Equipment Repair.
Good morning. This is, really, we've had damage to our towers before, and generally, it's been covered and hasn't been this expense, but just so you know, that at each one of our tower sites, we do have insurance on all of our equipment there. When it comes to the maintenance of our equipment, the antennas and the coax and the equipment on the tower are not under the maintenance agreement. They won't cover that because of what's happened on this instance. We started having some issues after a pretty severe thunderstorm that we had the first part of May, and I think we've tracked it back to about May the 6th, when we had a lightning storm, thunderstorm move through. They didn't find the problem until about a week ago, and they sent a crew up on the tower, and when they got up on the tower, they found that there's another piece of equipment, the antenna, that's clear at the top of our tower that is damaged. So this quote, the reason I'm here today is Motorola would like something in writing, which an email from me will suffice, but just saying that the cost will be covered by the county either through insurance or that we will cover the expense. As you can see from the quote, they've already been on the tower once, they've got to climb the tower again to make the equipment repairs and replacements, and that's not a cheap item. It is on our main tower. On the other four towers, generally, we would have TFMCom do the repairs or the climb, but on this main tower out here, there's so much equipment on it that they don't want to climb it, and that's why Hayden was contacted by Motorola. So I just, I've got, I'll answer any questions. I can tell you that the antenna alone, as you can see, is over $6,000, so we've got over a quarter of a million dollars' worth of equipment at each one of these towers, and we knew that when we purchased the system, and there's all these antennas and all this equipment is tuned for specific equipment to work properly at each one of these sites, so.
What's the, what's the location of the tower?
It's out here southwest of town on Old 50, a couple miles outside of town.
Allen basically spoke to this, but the reason we're asking you to approve this quote is not because we intend to then go write a check for it, it is because we want to get Motorola started on it immediately, but it takes a while for our insurance to process claims, but if you guys effectively approve this and say, "Yeah, if insurance doesn't cover it, we will," that is a good enough assurance for them to make these repairs now. Again, I, K-Camp's normally been very reliable in these instances, so I don't, I don't think we're going to end up writing a $27,000 check, but just in case, we wanted to get them started on it so we could get fully, fully functional again.
Spent too much on this to get this all up and going to let it set, not working right over the lightning strikes, so.
Is there any lightning suppressor?
We've, we've got them on there, Roy, we've, we've got as much lightning protection on there and grounding as we can get. We added more grounding when we put the new system in. I think our additional grounding to our, our towers and our sites in the original installment of all of our equipment was over $50,000 from what we've had before. So we've got additional stuff. This is just one of the things that, that happens to us every once in a while, and it seems lightning is one of our enemies. Now, to add to what Derrick has said also, you need to understand that we are running under a presidential declaration disaster also, so it is possible, and like I told Derrick yesterday, I don't ever believe anything FEMA tells me until I see the check in, in hand, but it is possible that this could be covered under that declaration because it happened during the timeframe of our disaster declaration, and FEMA covers 75%. So if insurance doesn't cover it, that's another avenue we can pursue to keep from using local funding. At the very least, the $500 deductible that we have can also be covered under the disaster declaration, and we intend to apply that also.
Actually, with as much equipment that's up there, this is fairly small, I mean, thinking as we weren't hit by that hail, you know, that could have just wiped out a whole lot of equipment, so I would make a motion to approve the Motorola Solutions Service quote in the amount of $27,396.
You have a motion, does anybody else have a comment on this before? If not, I have a motion, is there a second?
I can hear.
A motion in a second. Janet?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Allen. Thank you. Yeah, like I said, that was our only item of business we had today, so that will take us to staff reports, Derrick.
Yeah, you'll note that Joanne just came in. Joanne handles our risk management matters for us, and she actually, she's left now, but apparently, K-Camp just now approved that claim, so, so yeah, it's, we're good to go, so it sounds like they're going to take care of it. As you all know full well, we spent the last couple days in budget, budget meetings. I think that went incredibly well, the feedback that I got from all of you was positive, with the exception of our pay plan staying pretty flat. We have, you know, vehicles we're going to replace per our replacement schedule, but that's already budgeted. We have a little bit of salary overlap for a director because we're trying to do some success, we're planning on a retirement, trying to do some succession planning, but by and large, a pretty flat budget, and so, as we explained yesterday, where we're at now is Janet and I will basically start putting it all together, we will add the values in, and then that'll give us a more complete picture of what we're looking at, but I, I believe pretty strongly that the board is going to be happy with the ultimate budget that comes back, so, you know, I can't thank the department heads and elected officials enough for their work in this process because they, it is their budgets that they try and keep flat, and I know that several of them, if not all of them, are voluntarily doing without things that they probably could use for the sake of, you know, we try to keep things flat. That being said, we, we also looked at our reserve balances, and we've talked about this a lot, how our balances have increased pretty dramatically, and, and the purpose for that is then we use it to do some repairs. We talked about the next wave of repairs that need to be done. We've replaced the HVAC at the jail. The jail is going to need a new roof, that is something that I would say will be in front of you sooner rather than later. The HVAC at the district court building, spent a lot of time in that building last week, and it, it, it struggles, it struggles to keep up, so that is on the horizon. We've already approved repairs to this lot out here, but those repairs are still to come. Once they happen, you'll probably want to look at some kind of resurfacing potentially, I know that's something that's been discussed. The lot out at the recycling center, which that's a different fund, that's solid waste fund, but that is something that, I say all of this to say, we, we certainly still have, have a list of things we need to take care of, but the funds are there, and the ongoing transfers into those funds are budgeted for and we believe are sustainable, so while we are going to use funds out of those reserves to pay for these expenses, every year, we're going to transfer a fairly substantial sum back into those reserves that in theory will cover most of it, so I, I am pleased with what the current long-term trajectory is for our finances. One of the issues, and I'm going to ask David and Allen, and maybe Allen left, Allen's right here, to talk about it, is the roads and all the weather we've had. David will get into the specifics, but we, we have just gotten hammered. We have roads that, and we saw pictures yesterday, that have completely fallen apart, I mean, just crumbled into nothing, and we hope that we can get funds for that, and I want Allen to maybe flesh that out a little bit. What I can say is that him and Tom are on it. We have already made the declaration, I mean, they are quote-unquote bulldogging that as hard as they can, and that's great because we're going to need that, we're going to need those funds with all the damage we've sustained. You know, you talk about the projects that David had scheduled, and we're not going to get to those projects this year, and we're going to spend the rest of the year rebuilding roads, and I will tell you that there are other counties that are in, somehow in much worse shape than we are, I mean, this whole part of the state has just been, we got some data from the National Weather Service, and I believe with this last storm, we're up near 40 inches of precipitation this year, and we just, I don't, I don't know how you sustain that, so, but that's all I have. If, Allen, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about just the, the process we're going through and the steps that we're taking to secure those funds.
So as Derrick said, adding on to it, we did sign another declaration of disaster, local disaster for the county. That was done for a couple reasons. We are running under the federal disaster declaration that was applied for, started, the time period started April 28th and is continuing to operate. As you know, two or three weeks ago, we did a declaration of disaster for our county because of the damage that we received and the flooding that occurred. I made a phone call Monday to K-M, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, and asked them if we should do another one because of what had happened to us again, and they recommended that we did. That just makes sure that we're covered again. What's happening to us, and David knows better than anybody else, we've repaired the roads three or four times, everything that we did repairs on in our first declaration, this flood that we got that, well, the floodgates were closed here in Ottawa again for the second time this year on Sunday. We had more rain and more flooding, which some of that was because the lakes were letting out, both Melvern and Pomona, the river was already running full while they were trying to let water out at, at the lakes. So that caused some of our additional flooding, it was a little bit worse than the one three or four weeks ago, but I will say the, the Corps of Engineers is trying to help us as much as possible. The water they had been letting out, the lakes went back up two or three feet, so they're right back up where they were about three or four weeks ago. They didn't gain anything. We have also received enough information that we're collecting across the county. We, we started a program several years ago when we did a disaster declaration with FEMA. They wanted to know how much rain we had got, and we had more damage in the south end of the county than we did in the north end, or we had some in the west part and not in the east part. So we started a program with Cokeraz, which is run through a K-State, and it's a national program on collecting data on our rain, and we've got several people reporting across the county, and it's a nationally recognized program, so we can pull up how much rain has occurred in those different parts of the county instead of just taking our, our rain amounts from either the water plant here in Ottawa or from the airport out here. So we have rain all, amounts all over the county, and just one example of that is the northwest part of the county on Sunday, reported about three to three and a half inches of rain, you get south of town here, it was about seven inches of rain. So that makes a difference, and we can take that documentation when it comes to the projects that Public Works will submit to FEMA as to why we have more damage in one area of the county than we do in other parts, and they will take that into consideration. So the point that we're at now is documentation, and I've talked to you before, working real close with David and the Public Works folks, we have to document everything anymore. We have to document what our roads were like before this event occurred, what they looked like during, and what they looked like afterwards before we even start any repairs, and pictures and video is the best way of doing that. So I know David has purchased some cameras and some additional equipment, I talked with him yesterday on a couple things, and there's also a difference, David will probably talk about our FAS roads and, and the difference between those. FAS roads are already federally aided system, roads that comes from a different pot of money from the KDOT and the federal road system, so we can account that for our damage, but we don't get our funding through FEMA for those roads. And David, I know, talked to him yesterday, we're already working on three of our FAS roads that were blacktopped that have received a lot of damage to get those repairs in order, and then there's also ways we can do temporary repairs before we do permanent repairs, and we're trying to document all of that so that we can recoup cost. FEMA typically pays out 75% of an approved project, 25% then is on the county. Typically, also, if the state of Kansas approves it, they'll kick in another 10%. So we're sat, sitting here holding 15% of approved projects. It may not, if I tell you we've got a million dollars damage, which that's just a figure, then FEMA'd cover 750,000 if all the projects are approved. They may go, and they will send people out and inspect things, and they've already, the state's already had somebody down here making sure that we met our threshold, which was not a problem. They didn't go very far, and was only with us an hour or two. So then the state also kicks in the 10%, and this could take several years. So it's going to impact this year's budget because we may not see money this year. It may be next year, it may be two or three years before we get the projects closed.
Well, that changed what we might possibly get because of the amount of damage. I heard the news this morning say that damage could go into the billions. I don't know if they were talking Missouri and Kansas, or just Kansas, but being there so much and so many counties that are probably are applying, will that affect what we might get?
No.
So they won't have a lump sum and have to split that up amongst counties?
No. It'll be approved projects. If David does a project that says it's going to be $100,000 for a project, and I know a lot of times we split projects up by group, blade districts, so if you have one blade district that's $100,000, and they say, "Yes, we'll, we'll approve that," then we'll get 75% of that amount from FEMA and hopefully 10% from the state. So we can say, like I said, we could say we got a million dollars damage, but again, until you see that check in hand, there's no guarantee for any of it.
With additional burden on our guide, who are out there trying to fix the roads that...
And some of that, yeah, some of that preventative stuff that we do too, like the guys running on the overtime and putting out barricades, there are some of it, when you do the preventive that covers not only overtime but the regular time too, and we have to track all of that. So even administrative costs, they'll pay up to 10% on administrative costs, so everything that's going on in David's office, if it has to do with the flood, can also, we can recoup some of those costs too, but we have to have that documentation, and that's what it really boils down to. If we can't document that we've had a disaster, then we're not going to receive the funding. And they are going into a new, this will be our first that Tom and I have worked on the state having a little more control over these projects than they have in the past, so I don't really know how, we typically have a kickoff meeting, and I don't know how that's going to go yet because this will be our first one, but we've also been in contact with the city of Ottawa and the other cities throughout the county too, to, to see. I do know that a minimum project is $3,000, and so most of the smaller cities won't even be able to qualify for one project, but the city of Ottawa, I'm sure, will qualify also.
I would say the, the good news is when David came on in January, one of the things that we talked about was the need to document the condition of the roads basically on an ongoing basis, and so he has urged his staff to do that, they have been doing that really since David's been here, and when we talk about having software to help with that, that, that really is a need because we, you know, we have guys out manually taking pictures and writing handwritten notes, and then, you know, we're basically compiling that stuff, and if we had a program to help, and they are out there, that's going to put us in a much better position to be efficient, and so we talked about that yesterday, and, and I don't know exactly when that project, because we'll, you know, we'll look at software countywide, but this is an example of a time when we could really, could really use that to, to help with this documentation, so.
And we're looking through the ESRI programs too that we already, the Appraiser's Office uses, David's office uses, and our office, we've found a lot of things that will help us with this documentation also, that documents during, or during and after parts of the disaster, so I think there's some things that we can, we can definitely do a little bit better to make things easier for us and, and capture the information that we need.
Looks like to me you need a full-time video operator to, to go around to all the roads.
Yeah.
How current do these videos need to be done?
Some of the counties do them, I know, I know in the past, I've talked with Riley County, for instance, is one county I talk with quite often, and they go around at least once a year and document all the roads, and that's not a bad thing to do. I think our blade districts can do that, and David knows more about what we need to do than, than I do, but when it, when it comes to it, it's just real simple, we have to do the documentation. If we don't, then we can expect our projects not to be approved. So that's one thing we're doing, we have to do an impact statement, which is something new too, and that's something Tom and I are working on, and that impact statement's not only to the roads, but how does it affect the public, how does it affect our first response departments, so that's something we've got to get compiled and be ready when the state is asking for that, and now everything too, I found out yesterday, is going to be all computerized and up on the cloud with the technology, so we're not writing a lot of stuff, we're just doing data entry and submitting it directly to the state and to FEMA. So I'm sure we'll have to have some people go through some training so that they know how to, to do that type of uploading of our information too, so for my department, other than that, our... So for my department, other than that, our, I think I've commented before that our command trailer was in getting an upgrade. We picked the trailer up a couple days ago and Tom and I spent some time in it yesterday. We've got some upgrades to the technology that's in the trailer and some new air conditioning units and, and brought it up. We've had it for like a little over 10 years now and these are some things that needed to be repaired and replaced, so it's ready to go again. We've got a couple more things to add to it, but our trailer's back in operation and ready to be deployed if it's needed.
Well, we appreciate you and Thomas and your efforts through all this mess.
Why don't we go, if there's no more questions on that, why don't we go ahead and go to you David, being on this already?
Yeah, it's documentation right now. We are meeting as a, as a staff on a weekly basis to make sure that we are, that everybody's on the same page, that we're collecting the information that we need to. You know, each, each time that we deliver rock to a particular place, we're, we have to indicate whether it's flood related, which 99% of what we're doing right now is just that. So all of the, all of the documentation has to match. We, we can't have holes in the, in the information. So everybody from our office staff to our blade operators to our truck drivers, everybody is working together to make sure that we are documenting what we're doing, what equipment was used, what personnel was used, all of those things, in addition to photographs and in some cases, video of the work that is transpiring. Again, we have damage all over the county. I, I spend quite a little bit of time in the truck looking at things, as do several of our folks. We have areas that we haven't been able to touch yet. And so it's going to be a long year. I would ask the, the public to, to be patient, but certainly let us know if, if they see things that maybe we're not aware of, to bring that to our attention so that we can get it documented and get it taken care of as soon as possible. As Alan mentioned, I've been working with KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. They have a emergency relief funds available. It's a different pot of money than, than the FEMA funds that are for our FAS route, the, the routes that are eligible for federal dollars. So Colorado, Virginia Road are certainly, we've already submitted those. Yesterday I submitted Idaho Road. You know, we had a bridge that essentially either end of the bridge was washed away. We had a, I, I had a, our bridge engineer consultant come down yesterday to take an initial look at it. He inspected things, gave us a recommendation to correct that issue, but he needs to come back once the water has receded and it's dried out a little bit to inspect the whole structure. He really needs to get down and, and look at the, at the structure to make sure that there's no, no additional damage. I'm really hopeful that, that there's nothing else besides the two, which are quite significant. I'm hoping that there's nothing structurally wrong with the bridge itself. If that's the case, we've got a longer project, a more expensive project to deal with. In the meantime, we've got Idaho Road barricaded in two spots on both ends of the bridge, either side of the bridge, right at the bridge, and then barricades at Lebette and 68. While our engineer was out there, he noted that several folks continue to drive around our barricades. I don't know if they think they can get through or if they're just going to take a look at things. You know, I don't know, but I would encourage folks, if you see a barricade, please don't go past them. It creates a dangerous situation for themselves and we certainly don't want anybody to get hurt. So please honor those barricades when you see them on the road. So yeah, we, in this last flood, a lot of the, several of the roads that we had improved, we lost again. Colorado Road's a perfect example. We had pulled the material back up to the edge of the road and got that in pretty good With the last flood on Sunday and water just receded a couple of days ago, all that material is washed away again. There was not enough time for it to set up and, and get firm, even though we did some compaction, it, it still washed away. And so we have that sort of issue on some of our secondary roads as well that we had made improvements on to, to open them up, to fill some of the rutting. And again, it's washed into the ditches, into the creek. So we, once again, for probably, I think the fourth time, we are starting over. We continue to work overtime. Have not made the overtime mandatory, it's voluntary, but the, the guys are putting in extra hours to, to, to help get the roads back in shape. Prior to the flood, we had folks working on Saturday to remove trees. I think they had three or four large trees that they cut up and, and got out of the road prior to the flood. Then yesterday they moved, I think around 10 large trees that had washed up on Vermont. They got those pushed off. We've got a lot of work, a lot of debris removal coming. Just, I think on, towards the end of last week, they had already removed 20 end dump loads of debris from a variety of bridges and, and roads across the county. We're just scratching the surface on debris removal. We've had some folks that have been kind enough to cut up some of the trees in, in their, their neighborhoods. I appreciate that. And, and they let us know that, that what they had done so that we can, we can get out there and, and get those, the remnants of the trees picked up and, and hauled away. So if, if that sort of thing happens, I would again ask folks to, to notify us so that we're aware of what's going on out in the county. We have limited staff, limited hours and, and citizens jumping in to help out is appreciated. We just need to know about it so that we can, we can assist and, and take care of the It's, it's, it's been a long year. The staff, every day they, they come to work, they roll up their sleeves and they, they get with it. It's, it's kind of tough to see all of your hard work washed away time after time after time, but they, they do their very best each and every day on behalf of the citizens of the county. And so I would just ask that the folks out there continue to have patience, but please do give us a call if, if you have information that you'd like to pass along to us so that we can be aware of everything that's happening in our county. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
I would comment on staffing level a little bit. This has been a catastrophic spring and, and we don't staff to a level designed to handle catastrophic events. It would not be prudent of the board to do so in that. I've never seen a, a back-to-back seasons like this. And so if we consistently kept, I mean, we could have double the staff and we still couldn't get everywhere we needed to in the time that we want to. And so this, we are appropriately staffed for our normal operations, not only in Public Works, but in all of our departments. And to overstaff would be again irresponsible, but that's, you know, we, there's only so many hours in a day that we can work these guys. And having been there just the other day for a meeting, they're tired. I mean, they're, not just the guys on the blades, but you know, our superintendent, our foreman, David. I mean, we're, we're working as hard as we can and we're, we're taking calls, we're making lists, we're prioritizing, we're... But I do think that with regard to barricades, I would urge citizens to not drive around them. I mean, obviously first and foremost, we're concerned with their safety and we don't want to see anybody get hurt. But second of all, when that happens and a situation arises, then we, we deploy Alan and we deploy Jeff and his staff. And it is a tremendous use of resources, which of course we, obviously we, I mean, it's necessary and we do that without an issue, but if we can avoid those situations and we try to by blocking roads, then, then obviously that's preferable for us. So please understand that if roads are blocked, they are blocked for a reason and we ask that you not drive around them.
One thing that David and I've talked about that, just put out there so to answer any questions, some people's going to see this. David's, they're going to try to get the center of the roads the best they can so the road is usable. I'm sure we're going to see some people thinking, well, they were here, they fixed the middle of the road and they didn't touch the ditches while they were here, which you're going to see some of that because if they tied up the time to try to fix the ditches right now, you're going to have a lot of other roads that are not going to be passable, are not being worked on. So just put out there that you're going to see a lot of, of that. Get your center of your roads in fairly good shape so you can drive on them. And then as time permits, we'll be coming back to try to get the ditches and stuff repaired, but that isn't going to, your road's not going to be taking care of the ditches and everything all at once. That's, we couldn't get to everything if we do that, so. Or they couldn't get to everything, not we.
Yeah, there is no way that we can make the improvements to every mile of, of road fully and completely with any amount of reasonable timeliness. So our first priority is to make sure that the road is open, that there is a adequate driving surface. They may be narrow, folks may not be able to, you know, they may have to pull over and let somebody by, but this is going to be improved in stages and we will continue to widen things out and fill in these, these washouts and hopefully take care of some of our ditching issues as, as time goes on here. It's just going to be a long process, a very long process.
Okay, any questions on the road situation? Hey, thank you David.
Alan Hudson.
Sitting back here just listening to the, the conversation and, and for David, just so that you understand too, with us running under this declaration and being short-staffed, there is one thing that can be considered on the debris removal and even on the road repairs is by hiring contractors. And that's something that can be done and then we can recoup those costs also through the declaration, the disaster that we do have. So that could be something that while we're running under that declaration, we can also take action if we need to, to help get the manpower, to get our roads back up where they need to be and to get some of this debris removed if we have to. So I wouldn't be surprised if Derek or David come to you and, and that's a request in the next week or two.
But explain to me how we don't have any idea of what we're going to get, if anything, from this declaration. So if we went out and did that and then we don't get anything, we're just putting ourselves more...
That's just like the repair I requested from the tower site. I mean, there is just a little bit of a gamble, but if that becomes something that we think that we need to do to get the roads up as quick as possible to where we need them, that may be something to consider.
For example, during the last flood event a few years ago, I've gotten some of the last paperwork on the last flood event from FEMA and the state. We just received a check for $26,000 from, from FEMA. However, we were denied on 170-some-one thousand dollars worth of work that we had submitted for, for a variety of reasons. Not being able to, to document properly these things is, is a primary reason, but it is a, it is a gamble. I'm hopeful that with the state being more involved this time around, that we have a little better success, but it, it, there is no guarantee that we're going to be refunded for any of this work that we're doing.
Thanks Alan. Okay, Sheriff?
I'll shift gears a little bit away from roads. I think we've kind of beat that up. As you know, we've had a Citizens Academy that we've been hosting at the Sheriff's Office. Tonight is our last class with that and we will have, we started with 11, I believe we have, it's either nine or 10 citizens that'll be graduating from that program tonight. And it's been, it's been a fun time and it's been good for my staff and for the public, but mostly for that, that interaction and the feedback that we get. It's been a very beneficial thing for us and it is something that we intend to, to continue. Also, a few years ago, when we redid the Sheriff's Office and we moved over to Beach Street, one of the focuses that we had was making sure that we had a, an efficient training center, a training room in there. So you may see a lot of vehicles around that building, especially this month and next month. These are really high training times. And we had a full house yesterday, we will again tomorrow, and then we'll be hosting some state training as well for DUIs enforcement as well as human trafficking, anti-human trafficking campaigns. We're going to be hosting those things for the state in our facility and that. So I, I bring that up just to say thank you for, for what the county provided for us and that, let you guys know that we're using it for its intended purposes and getting people in here for, for that, for that training. Also, we did discuss during the, during our budget stuff a little bit about vehicles and I had mentioned that we'll be road testing a Dodge Durango. We have that here and we started that yesterday. It is black and it has a light bar and it has no markings on it. Does have a Michigan tag, so if somebody sees it running around, that is us that, that is using that. It is legitimate. Our, our staff will not be conducting traffic stops or things like that in it, but it will be being used on the road so that we can see how it handles. I took it out for a little bit yesterday to see how it handles on the various surfaces and particularly gravel roads and that's where we, we drive a lot. And so far we, we are pleased with that, but we'll be, we'll be driving that for about a week. So I just didn't want anyone to be alarmed if they see this vehicle that doesn't look like one of ours. And then also, as you guys are aware, there's a lot of progress that's exciting and it's from growth up in the northeast part of the county and particularly in Wellsville. Wellsville has a small police department and I have been meeting with the police chief up there to, and we're kind of working together to figure out, okay, as this growth happens, what do we need to be doing to work together as a, in a law enforcement community so we can keep a handle on things and stay on top of it? So I just wanted you guys to, you know, to be aware that we are, we are having those meetings and we're getting all those things in place so that we can provide the service that, that the citizens of the county expect. So other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
So right now?
Thank you.
Who else do we have back there?
Hey Rick, I would ask, because we have Tony here and I'm trying to be cognizant of his time, could we go do our executive session before Commissioner comments? That way we can get him out of here and on his way and then we can end the meeting with your comments.
Sure. One last staff, Janet, do you have anything?
Just one quick thing about the budget. Some of you had asked questions during the budget meetings for us to get you additional documentation. You know, this is a time where, you know, Derek and I are working on getting everything into the workbooks and just taking... into the workbooks and just taking the information that you guys are recommending from those budget meetings we had. So if you have additional questions, don't, don't hesitate to ask us before we come back to you guys with the state budget workbooks. I know you guys asked for some, some replacement schedules and some things like that, and I'm going to be working through the notes to get you the things that you guys asked for. But again, if you have any questions before then, don't hesitate to contact me or Derek, and, and we'll get you the, get your questions answered before we come back to you with a, with a proposed budget in the state budget workbooks, so. And one reminder, the Security First Titles BBQ is today, that you've all been invited to, so that starts at eleven-thirty.
We need to enter into an executive session, discuss a pending legal matter pursuant to the coma exception, allowing for privileged communication between the county councillor and the Board of County Commissioners. Also, who else will be?
The Board, the councillor, and Tony Rupp. For twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes? Okay. Do I have a motion to enter to an executive session for twenty minutes with the county councillor, Tony Rupp, and the Board of County Commissioners?
To approve?
Have a motion, sir, second?
Second.
Janet?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stollmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, nine-twenty-one, we want to go in right now? Okay. Going in at nine-twenty-one for, what did we say, twenty minutes? Okay, we're back out of the executive session at nine-forty-one, no action taken. Okay, will take us to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports.
I attended the regular Ottawa City Commission meeting last Wednesday. A couple of the main points was they did have a public hearing considering the development of 401 South Main Street. It was all positive comments by the public, there was no negative comments as far as, and so the city commission voted to override the State Historical Society recommendation and is allowing that renovation to go forward as, as it was planned, which is good for all of us, I think. The other couple of things, they did vote to reduce Main Street by, funding for this year by about three thousand dollars, and the FCDC funding by six thousand, which is considered less than they were considering to start with. And then I did, I go to the study session on Monday night. They started some of their budget processes with the 911 funding, FCDC, Prairie Paws, and the Ottawa Main Street Association were some of the highlights on those. Also, we did have an employee that was out checking roads on Monday night that had a close call. Just thankful that, that there was no injuries for the employee, so anyway.
Okay, I had two meetings scheduled since our last meeting. I had to miss both of those. One was Derek and I was on a panel interviewing for FCDC Director, my Prairie Paws meeting came up, and it was a study session Tuesday, my Tourism Board meeting was, came up, and that's all I've been to since the last meeting. We do have Employee Appreciation luncheon Friday, eleven o'clock. You're here in this room, so everybody can be around eleven o'clock. And we have a commission meeting on July the third, and that's the only thing I have. No one else has anything, would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion, sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Or adjourned?